Sure.
Uh, let us pray. Um, Lord, thank you for, uh, for this day. Uh, thank you for this gorgeous weather we've been having. Thank you for the rain that you've sent recently. Uh, Lord, I ask that you be with the city leaders, city staff, um, as they have a hard job to do to, uh, you know, keep the interests of the city and also the citizens in mind. Uh, I ask that you give this board, uh, the wisdom as we hear this case to, to make the appropriate decision. Uh, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. All right, do we have?
Are we doing the flag?
We're doing the flag?
We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all. The honor and Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one and indivisible.
Do you have a motion to approve the minutes for March fifth? Is there a motion on the table?
A motion to approve.
There's a motion, there are here a second?
Second.
There's a motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any objections? Same sign? No objection, motion carries. All right, we start our first case. Case number twenty, twenty twenty-five dash zero two dash fee, open the public hearing to consider the approval request of Odessa Science Solutions LLC, agent of variance from City of Odessa zoning ordinance, chapter fourteen, article fourteen dash ten, signs four, one, variance from section fourteen dash ten dash one, 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 I, to allow an electric billboard sign to be placed at the height of forty feet instead of the allowed height of thirty-five feet. And to a variance section fourteen dash ten dash one, for an electronic billboard sign to locate thirty-eight feet from a residential district boundary line instead of a three hundred feet to any residential district boundary line. The property located at four oh one East Forty-second Street being lot fifty-one, block two, Sherwood District.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members. Um, the property involved in this request is located at forty one, I'm sorry, four oh one East Forty-second Street. The site is currently zoned office district and is occupied by an attorney's office. The property is surrounded by resident development, residential development to the north, south, east and west. Ten notices were sent, zero returns, zero approvals and zero protests. The applicant is Odessa Sign Solutions LLC applicant and Austin Mathis owner, are requesting a variance to allow an electronic billboard sign to be placed at a height of forty feet, uh, instead of the allowed height of thirty-five feet. And for electronic billboard sign to be located at thirty-eight feet from residential district boundary line instead of the three hundred feet to any residential district boundary line. The applicants are requesting a variance from section fourteen, ten, one, one, I, I, and from section fourteen, ten, one, one, I, 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 of the City of Odessa zoning ordinance. The following criteria as outlined in the zoning ordinance are to be used by the Board of Adjustment in evaluating variance requests. The burden of proof in meeting each of these criteria is upon the applicant. A, the variance request is not contrary to the public interest. B, special conditions exist for the applicant that do not generally exist for others. C, a literal enforcement of the ordinance will result in unnecessary hardship. And D, the spirit of the zoning ordinance is observed and substantial justice is done. Staff analysis of this request is that there are no special conditions associated with the property that do not exist for others in the area. The applicant's request to increase the billboard height to forty feet instead of the five feet above the maximum allowed height, instead of the thirty-five feet allowed height, will create issues related to visibility of traffic on the intersection of East Forty-second Street and McKnight Drive. Two, the intensity of light emitted by the proposed sign is compatible with the surrounding environment, I'm sorry, incompatible with the surrounding environment. Given its electronic and illuminated nature, the sign will cause excessive light pollution negatively affecting the quality of life for nearby residents. This impact is particularly concerning due to the proximity of the residential properties on all sides, north, south, east and west of the proposed location. The sign is proposed with, within an office zoning district where billboard signs are explicitly not permitted. Furthermore, the proposed sign will not be limited to identifying the onsite business, but will display third-party messaging or advertising. The use classifies the structure as a billboard, not a standard business sign, and therefore directly violates zoning regulations applicable to the office district. Staff recommends denial of this request for not satisfying the above variance criteria outlined in the zoning ordinance. Alternatively, planning staff recommends permitting the installation of up to three static signs at the height of thirty-five feet, displaying only fixed information related to business located on the property. And I'm here for any questions. I do have, uh, a hardship letter that was written that I can go ahead and pass to, uh, the chairman.
Want me to just read it out loud, so?
I'm sorry?
You want me to just read it out loud?
Well, I was gonna, it's up to you if you like.
Let me just read it out loud, so, second time. The owner of this location at the reference above address is a native Odessa born and raised here graduate from this high school. It was important for him to have location for his business on a busy street where he continued his, to prestige announcements. He mentioned how he wants to put message on his sign like athletes of the week, both high schools, valedictorians, sponsored message, happy birthdays and important events going on in the community. The unique, the unique thing about electronic message sign is the option of going into a dim mode at night. It does not have to be on the brightest setting, they, like they are during the day, to visible. The dim option is great for anyone who sign on low to the ground and have a lot of traffic close up. This sign will be at least forty feet from above, from the ground and setback from forty-second, one hundred and ten feet. I truly believe the sign will not be a disturbance to the neighborhood houses requesting an overall one hundred thirty-eight point fourteen square feet of signage that is under the allowed square footage of one hundred and sixty-eight feet of property. Thank you for consideration allowing my customer to have this additional sign. Misty Holloway Ibarra, owner of Odessa Sign Solutions LLC. You have questions for city?
You said the, the boundary's three hundred feet?
The boundary's three hundred feet. When we measured, um, through, um, the GIS map website, it is, um, it is like, I think the, the most that it reached even across East Forty-second was two hundred and, uh, two hundred and seventy-nine. Um, they do have a residence right next to on the east side, yes, the east side, and there is residential to the, uh, north.
To the north and the east, yeah. And they're only thirty-five, you say?
Yes.
Thirty-eight instead of the three hundred.
So, they're requesting forty, uh, when we measured it was about thirty-eight. Um, I do wanna point out that the difference between a billboard and a freestanding. This is a New York situation where freestanding, uh, signs that we've seen are mainly, uh, you know, they have that nine-foot clearance, they have just the two, uh, boards, the front and the, the, the back faces. Um, whereas, uh, in its, uh, located in a free area, not attached to any type of structure. Uh, billboard sign are the big ones that you see that, um, project different types of advertising, like, um, this, different businesses, also different events, you know, um, valedictorians as well, similar to the one, um, on, uh, Dixie and, uh, Eighth Street, on the corner right across from Walgreens. So, you have something similar to that. Now, these are not as big as those billboard signs, but they are, the intention is similar.
As a billboard?
They're not wanting to, uh, display any type of other business, but the fact that they're displaying, you know, other events and, and items on that billboard, uh, well, uh, on that electronic board constitutes it as a billboard. Now, we are willing to go ahead and let them have those three, uh, boards on each side, but, um, they would have to be static only, which is, uh, print only to the business that is there.
How do you keep that from not changing?
That's the thing. That's something that code enforcement, we will reach out to code enforcement to take a look at. Um, I know that there are several in the area, uh, code enforcement is, has their hands full right now, so, yeah, it's really hard to go ahead and, and send them out and to each and every one of them. We've been, uh, the times that we have issued, um, freestanding sign permits, it was only under the, the guise or the, the information that we were receiving from the contractors, not particularly this one, but all, all contractors, indicating that it was only to advertise their business. So, if they went off and did something else or advertised some other, uh, types of events or, or off-site information, then we really can't, uh, pinpoint, uh, who it is and when they're doing it and, so it's really, it's really hard.
In this case, were letters sent out to the neighbors?
Letters were sent out to the neighbors. There was ten, no responses. I did, we did send out ten, uh, notifications, no returns on letters, no protests and no approvals.
So, you, I'm, I'm just trying to get this clear. I'm hearing the word billboard.
Mm-hmm.
And, and in my mind, a billboard is an advertisement that's up for rent.
Yes, so.
So, how's that, how, why is that being brought into this discussion here?
Okay. The billboard is being brought into discussion because according to our ordinance, a billboard, electronic billboard is considered not anything that you're renting out to, but a billboard, electronic billboard is an off-premise sign on which the message or copy can be electronically changed by remote or automatic means. Okay. It doesn't, um, it doesn't necessarily mean that it can be rented out. There's no definition on that one.
So, what's the intent, purpose for this?
So, their intent was to go ahead and not only, um, advertise their business, but advertise, um, community events, uh, happenings within the city, the weather, uh, uh, graduations, students and things like that. So, that automatically constitutes it as a billboard and not as a static sign for only advertising a business.
Similar to like what you'll see at a bank?
Correct.
Okay.
Now, as far as square footage of sign, I see on this one picture they already have their business advertised along that whole wall.
Yes.
Uh, how does, does, does all of that meet even if they were to be static, uh, does that fall in the criteria of our signage square footage? Will they meet all of that?
They meet the sign, the sign maximum allowance, uh, whereas those signs, the main, the, the bigger ones gonna be facing Forty-second, East Forty-second. The smaller ones will be facing the sides, uh, west and east. Um, they do, they do meet the maximum sign allowance and actually it's below that. Uh, the maximum sign allowance according to the zoning ordinance is, um, one point seventy-five of the, uh, linear street frontage. Um, in this case, it falls within, I'd say, approximately two hundred, approximately two hundred and twenty. They are below that, way below that.
And that even falls in the, in the zoning of the office? Or does that, does that change criteria, 'cause we're zoned office now instead of retail or, or that nature?
So, like I said, this is a unique situation whereas they are allowed a freestanding sign, but they are not allowed a billboard. So, we're trying to meet, uh, some of their requirements or, or trying to meet in the middle to, you know, try and facilitate this with them. We, we didn't, we are denying or requesting a denial on what they're proposing, but we're trying to meet in the middle with them.
Like a lighted sign would be fine?
Uh, yes, as long as it, um, is static only and only advertises the business.
And if it was three hundred foot away from residential?
Well, the, um, uh, the zoning ordinance does not, um, normally indicate what the, the distance between residential is for freestanding. Um, so, we're trying to not calculate it as a freestanding, but trying to observe those regulations as well as trying to keep it away from actually being a billboard.
So, so what I'm, what I'm taking here is this is gonna be a wraparound sign. So, it's gonna be like a rolling marquee going around this, this structure, this pillar that's standing up in the air.
We have the, the, the sign company here. If you would like, uh, to open the public hearing, we can have them speak on their behalf, if you like.
Does you know the questions for staff?
I, I'd like to ask.
Staff or?
The, the, the manufacturer?
All right, thank you.
You want to open the public hearing?
Yes. At this time, I open the, the meeting to the public. Anybody wants to wish, to speak for or against it, please stand. Please come forward. State your name and address for the record, please.
Misty Holloway Ibarra.
Okay, any address of?
We're at fifteen fifteen North Grandview.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, the sign is not on the north side at all. It only is on the front side facing Forty-second and five feet on the side. It's not a full wrap. The sides are all ten feet, so it's half of the side, full frontal. So, that's east and west. You can see, if you're driving from Dixie up to the sign, you can see the tower. No residential, except the three houses that they did show, yes, which honestly, Austin Mathis is in the process of buying the property next door, but that's here. So, you know, what if he doesn't go through it? I don't wanna promise something that doesn't even happen. So, you do still have the other neighbors. I'm not unaware of that. Um, going the other way, it's just businesses across the street. You know, we've taken that consideration going across Forty-second, behind Forty, like each neighborhood. I went, it's just the one block behind to see if I could see the tower from somebody's front yard, if it affears in their backyard. Like I mentioned, we could dim it. We even said, they mentioned something about, what if we turned it off at ten PM and turned it back on at six AM? I did let Austin Mathis know. All he said was, why should I have to when nobody else does? I get it. I just wanted to bring it to you that that is also an option. That's something that those LED signs do. You can set them up to turn off and turn on at a specific time. So, if we did go this route and, I don't, he's not making a profit. This was all intentional about like, I'm proud of my neighborhood. I, I'm moving back to, I, I wanted to bring a business back to Odessa. He's out of San Angelo. He wanted to come back and just be like, he's just proud of the community. It, it was nothing on profit. It's just about being proud of, yes, the valedictorians. He said that specifically. He's like, I wanted to make that something specific, things that are happening. He's like, that's just his outlook. It's, it's all positive. This is not for profit. This is not to put up other people's logos so that he can advertise anything like that. Yes, he's not just doing law firm advertisement, injury attorney, but that was just him giving back to the community for, for free on it and essentially, and so, this is not a bad, ill-intentioned and trying to become a billboard. It's not like that. It's just, his sign is higher because he has a unique structured building, an old church that has that temple, the old struc- structure, but it's just unique to the situation. It's no different than driving down the street and then Dairy Queen's. Dairy Queen's sign does not blind you. McDonald's sign is not blinding you, and it's closer to your visual than a sign way up there. It is not any different. Look at the one on Andrew's, it's Grant. It's Commercial Foods. Hers is a ten by twenty. It is, it's very bright. It's very visible. Does it blind you? No. Does, was there anybody, any wrecks? No. It's not a distraction to, like, like how it's presuming. So, that's kinda where we're going with that.
All right, anybody have questions?
I have a question. So, uh, my perception is this, the capability of the sign itself, is it capable of doing something like of a New York-style billboard where it's just like a marquee, like, right there on Times Square, just really getting your attention, or is it gonna be more like what you would see at a bank? A little more subtle, just, you know, with a?
I mean, all of them have capability. It's what you wanna do. I mean, you can make a flag flutter going across, lit up. I mean, you could do that if you want to. People, for Fort the Giant, you're gonna see that in a couple of weeks for Memorial Day. They will do that, but I don't, I just, no, it's not New York style, but they have the same case capability. Our sun is so bright here, I don't automatically set them on one hundred percent because it, it burns those light bulbs so fast. Just, um, Commercial Foods, she's at eighty percent. So, just for example, in front of your face, huge and bright, she's at one, eighty percent. His is gonna be so high. I told him we would try it at one hundred percent 'cause it's so high. We would bring it down to eighty. Again, this all matters. It's, it's not big and flashy like New York, I guess, 'cause those are, those are different types of LEDs. This is thirteen millimeter. Those are like two point five, five point five. This is a thirteen point five. So, the millimeters is way different.
Any other questions?
Just that, uh, question, what's the reason for the five-foot wraparound? 'Cause now if you're at, I mean, even if he's putting stuff on there, it's kinda like it's gonna motion around the corner, come back this way, so it's really, it's in my mind, it's something's gonna be moving which will attract the attention of cars that are passing by, because it's actually moving. If it just was kind of, electronic is fine, lit up, static, the message pops up and then it disappears and then another one pops up, but this one actually with those wraparounds, is that the intention to have the message kinda come around that edge?
If you have something flat and you make it come and the image comes through, like up at an angle, they can go up at an angle across. That's how images come across LED signs. So, for his, yes, his being, his being like that, when his comes through diagonal across and across, you will get the effect of like boom, 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 instead of the people who have the flat ones and it's just straight across, and you don't see the effect of that. So, yes, yes, you will see that. I'm not gonna lie.
Then, then another question, how tall is that tower?
The overall height?
Uh-huh.
Oh, I had it.
Just roughly?
And it's like fifty-five, sixty?
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. Anybody else wants to speak for or against? Okay, we'll close this section of the meeting. All right, take it back to the board. Discussions? Motion?
I would like to remind the board that, um, if, if the sign is approved, uh, or, or denied, uh, keep in mind that zoning ordinance does not allow for billboards, which is what this constitutes. Um, they can change the zoning to allow, but the zonings that are allowed are light industrial, heavy commercial, hi, heavy, uh, industrial, uh, I'll take a half here in a second. They are, I'm sorry, heavy commercial, light industrial, heavy industrial, which do allow billboards. Okay? Um, office zoning is not one of the ones that, in the zoning ordinance that allows for billboards, which is what they're proposing at this time. Um, my, uh, suggestion for, uh, to have all three of them but be static signs is, you know, what the staff recommends at this time. I mean, if, if, uh, there was an option, this is something that the staff would recommend.
Quick, quick question, Maria. If they, if they did the static ones, they could almost still be classified as billboards even if it was static and it was just lit under depending on the, right?
Well.
The definition of a billboard is kinda vague because this one is electronic, but there's plenty of static billboards out there, and then they could, they could possibly even change the advertisement on it too, like every week, every month, they could go out there and put a different vinyl cover on and advertise somebody else's business.
Correct.
So, how are we looking at that?
So, this is the recommendation that we make. So, what we're doing is telling you, okay, this is us, this is what we recommend a static. We recommend that only the business be advertised. Whether they do something else on their own, it's really up to, you know, um, us going out there and notifying code enforcement to, you know, flag them or, um, let them know that they can't be doing that and find them or have them remove it.
Maria covered it. I, I was looking at this case as well, and so I think the issue is, if there are any off-site advertising at all on the sign, that's, uh, electronic where the letter, where the information can keep changing, like a video or even the sign can keep changing, is a billboard. And fortunately, because of that, the zoning doesn't allow it at all. So, you can only vary something where the zoning allows the use, and in this case, it doesn't allow the use. So, Maria's right, they would have to do a zone change on that. Now, if they were just advertising, um, in a billboard fashion and they were just advertising information about the law firm, the problem is how do you control that? How do you guarantee that's gonna happen? The ordinance is silent, so it just says that a, it would just be a business sign, and it doesn't say whether the business sign can have moving advertising or not. So, I think to Maria's point, if you, if you open that door too and say, well, they can still have messaging that's, that changes, but it's only for the law firm, then it's, it's hard to enforce that if they keep the static. Um, so then, so then if that's resolved, then the second part is then do you want the sign? So, if you, if you say that it's now a business sign, then is the illumination too bright? It sounds like they're willing to work with the city and, and put dimmers on it, so there's options. The height, I mean, it's, it's above the thirty-five. They probably don't really have a reason for it, but there is a tower already there, so it's only a five-foot difference. So, I think our major concern is it's the, it's the wrong zoning right now for, if they're doing offset advertising. And then even if they're not doing offset advertising, then we just need to work out the amount of signage and the, and the illumination. But I think our department and the city, I mean, we wanna work with them. We want them to get their sign, so.
So, so if we do that and we, we entertain that, uh, allow the, them to pursue a different zoning, would we rather table this so they don't get kicked out? And then, then let them pursue that avenue if they desire, or, okay?
Okay, but what are the other zonings?
Uh, the other zonings, uh, are, uh, heavy commercial, light industrial and heavy industrial.
Does that?
The zoning is not gonna be a?
It won't?
That would be a major impact to those residential surroundings.
Yeah, that's gonna be a challenge.
It won't, no.
We, we think their best bet is to, is to have them, we can table it. That way they're not charged again. Give it until the next month. Talk to your, um, firm, um, and then see if they can do a static sign or, you know, just work with us on some other, um, options would be the best way. We don't, we don't wanna say, no, you can't do anything. We just wanna get, I think maybe just a bit more information would be appropriate.
I'm, I'm still not understanding what the static and billboard.
Static is only for, um, advertising of the business, for that firm, okay? And, and it doesn't, you know, it just advertises the, the attorney's office, their contact information, um, their service. That's a static, and it's just stays that way. It's just pronounced.
Static would be just like their sign that they have right here already. Just that static right there. It's not gonna change. It's not gonna do anything different. It's just gonna?
Because this, this has a marquee capability. It's considered a billboard.
Correct.
Okay.
No, they're allowing it to change.
Wait, hold on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, so I'm just, I'm just, you know, so for, i- i- this is just technical static billboard. It's just by technicality, and then zones, it falls under technicalities as well. But for me, you know, it's, I don't, I don't have a problem with it, you know, 'cause this is a, like a, like an insurance agency. They have static boards, if you wanna call it that, or marquees. Banks have them, you know, other businesses. And this is a lawyer, you know, if he wants to have community involvement, promotions and what have you, I don't have a problem with that either.
Okay.
But, but it's?
So, yeah, so that considers the situation, uh, a sign like that is considered a billboard. And billboards under the zoning ordinance are not allowed in an office zoning, which is where that attorney's office is located.
And we're, and, but isn't the purpose of this meeting to, to adjust that, so he can have that sign?
Well, not exactly that kind of sign, but just the static sign, the advertisement of his business. Now, that type of sign, a static sign, is allowed in an office, uh, zoning district. Um, however, a marquee sign that displays off-site information, off-site, um, advertisements is not allowed.
So, if the man was wanting a static sign, we wouldn't be having this discussion?
Correct.
But the man's wanting a billboard capability, that's why we're having this discussion?
Yes, sir.
So, what can we do to allow him to have that billboard?
Um, the other option would be, like I said, he would have to, uh, change or request a zone change to the zonings that I have mentioned, which are?
Light industrial, heavy industrial and?
Heavy commercial, light industrial and high industrial.
So, why are we limited to, to, why can't, why is it limited to, to just heavy, you know, these industrial capabilities?
That is, that is, uh, that is under the zoning, zoning ordinance.
But the, with the, the city ordinance was made at a time, a period before this technology came around, right?
Well, the city ordinance does call out electronic signs and electronic billboards. Um, it was at a time, now our ordinance, I will say, is outdated. We're in the process of updating it. Um, however, at this time, we still have to abide by this.
But going back to what Dave said? But going back to what Dave said, our zone right now doesn't even allow this type of sign. So, really, really, we can't, we can't grant a variance for it, because it's it's not even allowed in in this, in this deal. So, I think the only option we have is either just to table it and see if they wanna attempt the zone change, which is not recommended by the board either, because the impact on that area, they're not gonna get it through. That zone change won't happen.
Long, I mean, basically, long story short, there's nothing wrong with what they're wanting to do. We just can't allow them to have other stuff on it. That's it.
Correct.
That's as simple as that. Nothing wrong with the sign.
And then we have a way to monitor.
Yeah.
It's turned four.
There's nothing wrong with the signs. Everything's great. We just can't allow it to be a billboard to promote other businesses, other than that.
Not necessarily for rent, it's just, he just cannot.
Yes, for rent or.
Just anybody.
Neither.
If the sign regulations and billboard sign definition had said, um community services are exempt. I've worked in some cities where um public announcements are exempt, but uh again, I I think you're right. Like I think when the sign ordinance was written, nobody really did kind of what they're doing now, and it's becoming more popular. Like Sonic, Burger King started to do signs that were moving or video and all of that, as well as public announcements. So, I think because we have to go by the way it's written right now, it doesn't allow what they're trying to do if they if they have the additional advertising, even if they're not charging. We understand where you're coming from. Like, even if it's not, he's not trying to make money on the side, it's still not allowed by the the ordinance. So, I think that's where we're we're at.
Any other questions, discussion?
I I I don't, I don't have a problem with it. If there's some work that needs to be involved out by others, I think maybe
But that's, that's.
Give the man a chance to let him pursue those avenues.
But.
So, so I think with what you say that, it is, is, I mean, we, you you need to make a motion to table it to see if they wanna pursue those other avenues, to see if they can do something else, so they don't just get totally denied.
Cause we deny, we deny, uh today, they will have to wait a year to come back.
But I don't think we're denying that they can't do it. We're just denying the fact of having a billboard. That's basically it. That's all. So, it's not gonna change it. Yeah, they would have to agree to a static sign. Yes, that, yes.
Or some options, some other options that the city might wanna do. I think the, should we open it back to the public? Cause I think they wanna uh.
Or let me ask you this. What if, what if it was like what Jeff was saying, just because of the term of definition, the city can do some, on their end to like, okay, it's because technically, it's a billboard, but to me, in my mind, I don't see it as a billboard. It's static only because it has motion. It has capabilities to, where you can have.
So, in order to to add that, what he has uh mentioned to the boards, to the advertising boards, there would have to be a zone ch- um an amendment to the zone, a sign ordinance, to allow that. But that would constitute, going back to um Planning and Zoning Commission, for their recommendation to City Council and City Council twice. But that would be, that would have to come through a City Council approval. If uh if it were to be presented, it would have to be through City Council approval to change the 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 way the sign ordinance is written.
Yeah, so quick and short answer to that, we don't have the capability of changing the ordinance. That has a whole nother process that has to happen that.
And there's some work involved.
And there's some work involved and there's, you know, could take a year, could take two years, could take three years, just depending on how everybody looked at it, right?
Okay. We're gonna give, uh open it back to to public. Anybody want to speak?
I was just saying.
You could come up to the front, please, H and A for the record.
What's the difference between saying happy birthday and injury attorney? You went from billboard to static, but what's the difference? Injury attorney, happy birthday, John.
Again, we're going back to the way the ordinance is written.
Yeah.
That's something that's out of our.
Yeah.
And I don't have a problem, really, I don't think we have a problem with that. It's just, it's just technical.
Yeah.
Now you're getting technical.
Because he's the first person to wanna do it, it's bringing attention to it and it's gonna be a two-year wait. We did talk about zone ordinance in the very, very beginning, but I was told not to do that no more. Zone change. And then they told us to do the variance instead.
Well, we could do the zone change, but it's gonna be a different thing. It's just, it would be a.
Yeah, yeah, they explained it. And so, we didn't go that route to come this route and then here we are. But now you're saying, because it's ordered from like nineteen fifty, when nobody's ever done this before, we just are getting blocked. So, he would have to wait two whole years for the city to want to change the wording?
It is frustrating, I get it, but that's not the only thing that, you know, there's a lot of frustrations when it comes to doing this kinda stuff. Not only just, and I'm not lecturing you, you you probably do this all the time, but you know, if we allow the billboard to go in there, then, you know, to me, we're here to make the variances. And if it says you can't do it because it's a billboard sign, then you can't do it, cause it's a billboard sign. And you can be mad, I agree, but we can't make the change to how the billboards are. So, my reckon, well, I'm not making.
Okay, anything you wanna speak?
But my thought is that, you know, the sign's gotta be right to where they're trying to put it.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Alright, we close. Thank you. We close this section of the meeting. Alright. Forty, is there, is there a motion, discussion?
I mean, me personally, I'm motioned to accept for them to have the sign, cause nothing wrong with it. Just cannot be the billboard type sign. I mean, the signage is approved, I mean, with the city. Just a static sign, and that's it.
So, so Maria.
It's a zoning deal.
So, if we, if we approve uh just a static sign and they wanna do something else, are they gonna have to get another variance or?
So, if you can approve the static sign as, just for the business advertisement, um just the, what we have recommended. Um if in future they go a different route and do their own thing on the sign itself, like I said, um it would be a code enforcement reaching out to them to um correct that.
And if you do vote for a static sign, then you're only, they only need one variance. They only need the height variance, because the setback is assuming it's a billboard. So, the number two variance would actually go away. They wouldn't need it anymore. They don't have to worry about the setback. And again, the reason makes sense, right? If it's a static, straightboard sign with no video changing wall, then it can be closer to a residential district, cause it's not as intrusive, or if it's moving video or moving animation, then they put the three hundred foot rule. So, I mean, that would be the the easy fix, but obviously, we understand here, the law firm probably wants the the change.
Are you saying static, like it stays on one image all day, every day?
Um, well, you, well, what you, okay, so technically, yes, technically, yes. But then you, but then you could change that image anytime you want. So, you keep the bracket of the sign. And then if it's next month, you wanted to change the logo or something else, you could come, or even next week, you could just put up another. Yeah, so it would stay on one image all the time. Now, that's the other thing.
So, there's a motion on the table.
Yep.
Um, Sarah, can you repeat your motion or you wanna change it?
That's, that was a good question you asked, though. If we approve that, but they don't want that, is it a whole brand new deal? Or do we just table it and see exactly what they wanna uh agree with?
Can we just table it and say, go back to the drawing board and tell them, these are your options. Do you wanna go forward and then come back? And then we can approve the variance?
We can.
Because if if we approve something they don't want and they want something different, they're gonna have to come back.
They gotta.
Correct.
And to pay again and go through the process, or if we table it, you could just come back. Then, this is what we came to agreement with the options that the board recommended.
But what, hadn't they already been given this information, these options already? And so, they, they, to me, it sounds like they're already with the intent to maintain the billboard idea.
Well, according to the billboard, we deny it, uh becau- we deny the billboard, then they come back within a year. They won't have no other, no other options within the, another year. So, they wouldn't have a billboard for a year. So, we table it, they go back and with the recommendations, is this what we're gonna do, they could come back and uh give us other options.
So, what is, so if we did not, what if we had accept the billboard idea? Where, what's, what's from, what's?
I don't think we can, because the zoning doesn't even allow this type of billboard, because by definition, this sign
Industrial.
Is billboard. So, it seems like the path forward would be to rezone.
Yes.
Potentially, because unless the code changes, which who knows if it ever will or how long that would even take. But we can't approve something if it's not even allowed in the zoning designation.
If we, if we approved it, we would recommend that there be a change to the zone.
I think they would probably need to do that zoning, try to do that first, and then I don't think this is an issue, right?
So, the zoning can, I mean, the the billboard cannot be approved, because it's not allowed.
Yeah, it's not allowed in the.
You're gonna go through the council.
It would have to, to, in order to allow something like that, it would have to go through an amendment through council.
Do they say how fast they wanna put that sign up? If there's a rusher, would they be willing to wait?
Yesterday.
Yesterday.
It started with the cook, with y'all suggesting we do the changing of the zoning, cause it originally was zoned. But somebody changed it when they bought the church back with, and then we wanna change it back, and then y'all said, we shouldn't do that. We should go to the variance option. And I said, okay.
We did suggest the variance. They are allowed to rezone. However, those, for that particular type of use, that billboard, uh electronic billboard, it would have to be in only those zonings. Um, the zoning uh would, process would take, would have to go through Planning and Zoning Commission and then through City Council twice. And then to see, because of the impact of the type of zoning that it requires, it would, they would have to see the probability of it fitting in that zoning within that residential district. So.
That was a twelve weeks period, Tommy.
Yes. Yeah. So, and this one, uh when we suggested a variance, is to present it to them to see if they would allow it. We know that it does not go there and we did offer some options for you.
Yeah, but we just not getting the definition between static and billboard.
So, static is only for advertisement of the business. That's it. Nothing else, just the business, their logo, their times of operation, their service.
Alright, there's a motion on the table. I think this discussion needs to be discussed within the office. Is there uh, is there a motion, commissioners?
I motion the table to make sure they get it the way they want. A second.
There's a motion on the table and there's a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any objections? Motion carries. This uh, this will be tabled for further discussion internally.
Yes, sir.
If there's no other business, we adjourn with consent.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I miss, a motion to adjourn.
There's a motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any objections? Motion carries.
Thank you.